I would like to call this Village Board meeting of Thursday, September 18, 2025, to order. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Absolutely.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Beacan?
Here.
Trustee Matrasco?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Madam Mayor Giannelli?
Here.
Tonight, the Charity Golf Classic recipients and volunteers will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us up front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight, I would like to recognize the members of the Charity Golf Classic recipients and volunteers.
So, those volunteers that are here this evening that helped us out with the event are Colette Wokevich, Jeanette Wilson, Mary Phillips, Tanya Maco, Ken Ettle, Clerk Darlin, and Trustee Matrasco. Because I have some golf course staff here as well, Brian Trufilio, Javier Garcia, Morgan Fleming, and myself. So, we had a great event, and we'll talk about that later. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you all for being here and for all of your work to support that really important charity event for Glendale Heights. It means a lot to not just the students who get scholarships, but all the way through to the various organizations and the way that they support Glendale Heights. So, thank you for being here. We move on now to petitions and communications. Trustee Meritato?
No report.
Trustee Beacan?
Just real quick, five complaints for District 6 that I've assisted. I attended a flag planting and a 9/11 memorial service. Thank you.
Trustee Matrasco?
Just a couple shout-outs. One thing I wanted to say is I got a wonderful evening to be able to go over and understand some innovations in some of our local areas of things they're doing that actually is nice to see what they're doing that we can kind of bring into our town. So, looking forward to be able to talk with more about what we can do to make some differences that actually won't cost us any money, which is amazing. And also want to give a special shout-out to one of my special police officers, Mr. Pew. Want to make sure, Zack Pew, say hello. Sorry I missed. I had to announce that I missed Citizen Police Academy, so I am on record. I apologize. I will be there next week.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Siddiqui?
No report.
Trustee Light?
No report.
Clerk Darlin?
I attended the 9/11 memorial, which was a fantastic program. And we, Jenny Matrasco and I, last month or last week, we did the koalas over at District 41 for their kindergarten program, and that is all I have for this week.
Thank you. And I just want to mirror the sentiments about September 11th and that really, really moving ceremony that we had here in town honoring those that we've lost and making sure that we continue to remember, you know, the events of that day. So, I just want to thank our chief and the village team who put that together, and all of our partners from Bloomingdale and just the surrounding towns who came to help us support that. Community announcements. Village Administrator Flint?
Thank you, Mayor. Next coffee and chat with the Village President and Board will be Saturday, October 4th, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Village President or Village Board, please call the Village President's office anytime, (630) 909-5302, or contact your local district trustee.
Mr. Engberg, we're jumping to you? Yep. Sorry, over there.
With the arrival of the fall season, the Village of Glendale Heights, along with the Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are at least 15 feet from any structure, including fences and picnic tables. For more information, please contact the Glen Side Fire Protection District at (630) 668-5323, or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at (630) 894-9080. And also yard waste collection, we would like to remind residents that per village code, do not rake or move leaves or yard waste into village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November 26th, 28th, and 29th, depending on where your usual waste and recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, please call Republic Services at (847) 981-0091.
Thank you. Chief Pappas?
Thank you, Mayor. The Village of Glendale Heights has many years of history dating back to our founding dates of July 13, 1959. The Village invites everyone to attend our open house at the Glendale Heights Historic House on Saturday, September 27, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, to learn about all the rich history in our community. The Glendale Heights Police Department is sponsoring the next Historic House tour and will feature numerous pieces of older police equipment and artifacts. The Historic House is located at 311 Windy Point Drive at Heritage Park. For more information, contact Trustee Mike Light at (630) 909-5308, or Jessica at (630) 909-5123. The Village of Glendale Heights, the Glendale Heights Police Department, and our local school districts are teaming up and encouraging everyone to take the TEAL dot pledge for safe driving. School is now back in session for all our Glendale Heights schools, and we are encouraging all drivers to put down their phone, keep their eyes on the road, slow down, and drive like your child lives here. TEAL dot stickers are available at all village facilities, our school resource officers, and with our crossing guards. We encourage you to place these vinyl stickers on the corner of your back windows of your car, front windows at your home, or places of business as a reminder to drive safely. And remember, these are our roads, not racetracks. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/TEALdot.
Thank you, Chief. Director McNouts?
Thank you, Mayor. Come on out to Heritage Park for some fishing fun on Saturday, September 27, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the annual Cops and Bobbers Fishing Day hosted by the Village of Glendale Heights and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 52. Try your luck at catching some of the trophy fish like catfish, bluegill, and bass that live in Lake Becerra. Registration begins at 9:00 a.m., and the Derby begins promptly at 9:30. We will conclude the fishing derby with a trophy presentation and prizes. The fishing derby is a catch-and-release event. For more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 909-5123. Celebrate the fall season at Heritage Park on Saturday, September 27, following the fishing derby, from noon to 4:00 at the annual Harvest Fest. Welcome autumn's arrival with music, crafts, hayrides, chili cook-off, bags tournament, food and drinks, games, and much more. This fall event is fun for the entire family with activities for everyone. For more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 909-5123.
Thank you. Director McCumber?
The Village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the annual Show and Shine Car Show and Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display, along with a swap meet, food, music, and more. If you are interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. For more information, please contact Trustee Michael Light at (630) 909-5308, or Jessica at (630) 909-5123. During the months of October and November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded, no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040.
Thank you. Mr. Keough?
Join us at Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. If you'd like to be a vendor, or for more information, please contact Tanya Maco at[617.54][617.54](630) 909-5459.
Thank you. Ms. Garza?
Thank you, Mayor. If you just finished cleaning out the basement, attic, and garage, and you're looking for a place to sell your stuff, then join us for the annual community garage sale on Sunday, September 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Camera Park. If you have nothing to sell, then come out and shop for bargains for many of the different sellers. For registration information, please contact Jessica at (630) 909-5123.
Thank you. Director Cravens?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark your calendars. The annual Family Health and Safety Fair will be Wednesday, October 1st, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Sports Hub. There will be free activities and stations for everyone, including the teddy bear clinic, flu shots if you're 18 years or older, health screenings, child ID cards, and more. For more information, please contact Jessica at (630) 909-5123. Thank you.
Thank you. The Charity Golf Classic check presentation and recognition of Glendale Lakes Golf Course Grounds Maintenance and Golf Pro Staff with Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I am pleased to report on the success of the 25th Annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic, which took place on Wednesday, August 27. This year, we welcomed 107 golfers who enjoyed a wonderful day of weather, golf, delicious food, and camaraderie, all while raising funds for five deserving local charities. We would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to our sponsors and volunteers, who support played a key role in making this event another resounding success. New for 2025, we introduced a golf clinic designed to engage non-golfers and provide them with an opportunity to learn about golf, including techniques, the golf swing, and etiquette. We had five participants in the clinic, and we are considering offering this again next year to broaden our outreach. Over the past 25 years, the Charity Golf Classic has raised nearly $600,000 for various local charities, an accomplishment that we are extremely proud of. We would like to recognize the generous support of our sponsors who helped make this year's event possible. We had four platinum sponsors: Bloomingdale Bank &amp; Trust, Storino Romello &amp; Durkin, the Village of Glendale Heights, Christopher B. Burke Engineering LLC. We had one gold sponsor, Trotter &amp; Associates. We had seven silver sponsors: Glen Side Fire Protection District, Ivy Hall, Republic Services, Chicago Blower purchased two silver sponsorships, FH Passion, and the Big Blue Swim School. Our bronze sponsor was the Pappas family. Our beverage cart sponsor was RMK Fireworks. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Clyde's Donuts, who've provided donuts, imagine that, for breakfast on the day of the event. Tea sponsors, we had 11: Enterprise, April Hieronymus, Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights, Voya, Lucia Devia, Superintendent Marquette School District 15, Queen Bee School District 16, AT&amp;T FirstNet, Matt Weldon, Eddie Vargas State Farm Agent, the Russell Family, and Alma Florida Spanish Immersion. A special thank you to Sunrise Chevrolet and Glendale Nissan for their generous raffle prize donations. Finally, we would like to extend our deepest sympathy, excuse me, appreciation to all the volunteers, maybe it is sympathy, I don't know, who donated their time before and after the event. Your efforts were crucial in making this event a success. This year, the proceeds from the Charity Golf Classic were directed to five local charities: the Family and Faith Food Pantry, the Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program, the FO Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund, and the Glendale Heights Foundation. A total of $22,500 was raised and will be equally distributed amongst these organizations, with each charity receiving $4,500. At this point, I'd like the Mayor and Trustee Meritato to come down to present the checks to the deserving charities. The first check is presented to Family and Faith Food Pantry in the amount of $4,500. Accepting this check will be Pastor Steve Cass, and we'd like him to come up and say a few words on what the funds will be used for.
Hi, Pastor Cass. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for all of your support. It's wonderful that we are able to serve the community. You may not realize this, but we are feeding about 200 families every single week. Every single week, we're giving away frozen meat, fresh fruits and vegetables, milk, cheese, eggs, dairy, bread, bakery, vegetables from our own garden, pasta, oil, flour, you name it, we give it away. And we could not do this without the support of the community and so many others. We are thankful that through you, we are able to serve this community. Thank you so much.
The second check is presented to the Village of Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program in the amount of $4,500. Accepting this check is Tanya Maco.
My name is Tanya Maco, and I am honored to serve as the co-chair of the Christmas Sharing Program. 35 years ago, a group of dedicated employees from the Village of Glendale Heights came together to create what has become one of our community's most heartwarming traditions: Christmas sharing. Thanks to the incredible generosity of the village, its employees, residents, and many Glendale Heights businesses, we are able to provide food, winter clothing, Christmas gifts to families in need during the holiday season. Last year, because of your kindness, over 300 children received gifts they had wished for, making their holiday season truly magical. On behalf of the entire Christmas Sharing Committee, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the Charity Golf Classic members for your dedication and commitment in helping us carry on this wonderful tradition of giving. Thank you.
Our third check is presented to Glendale Heights Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund in the amount of $4,500. Accepting the check is Jorge Munoz.
A little nervous here, but I'm gonna do my best here. First and foremost, thank you to all for being here today. The generosity is a true gift to our community. The money you've donated to the Glendale Heights FOP Lodge 52 is going directly back into the community. Your contributions will help us continue programs like we just mentioned earlier, Cops and Bobbers, where we raise money, I'm sorry, where we have the officers who get to spend a Saturday with children from the community. Whether you know how to fish or don't know how to fish, they'll be there to guide them with. Also, one of my favorites, Cop and Rooftop, where we tend to always get a rooftop of the Dunkin' Donuts, right, to raise money for Special Olympics. My personal favorite, Hillen Helpers, which pairs our officers in the December morning, where we pick up a child, give him a cute little, you know, presentation with the squad vehicle, do a procession, we give them a good breakfast, and then we go and help them go shop for Christmas, for their family, for themselves, in which they enjoy and brings us joy, because their smiles is our smiles. Overall, the events are pretty fun and smiles and cool, but at the end of the day, they're also building bridges between us and strengthening the community of this as well. The events allow our community to see the human side of the badge, and they also remind our officers why we put on the uniform every single day. So, again, from the bottom of our hearts, we want to say thank you, and thank you for the support.
Moving right along, our fourth check is presented to the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund in the amount of $4,500. Accepting this check is Ken Ettle, who is our Chamber Board member and Scholarship Committee member.
So, just on behalf of the chamber, I want to thank the Village Board and the Village of Glendale Heights for their support of this event. As a benefactor of the funds that are raised at this event, the Glendale Heights Chamber is able to give out scholarships to some young students here in the community. This year, we were able to give out four scholarships in the amount of $1,000 apiece. We had our largest number of applicants that we've had in the last six, seven, eight years that I've been on the actual scholarship committee. So, it proves that there's really a need for that in the community. There are some wonderful young students in this community. If you saw some of the applications, it just, what they do and what they've accomplished in just such a short period of time in their lives is truly amazing. We're able to meet with them at the scholarship luncheon, get to know them, and they're truly amazing people, and we're always very proud, and it's a highlight of our year to give out these scholarship funds to them. And I think it's even more meaningful for them as well. You know, they've grown up in this community, they've worked in the community, they've volunteered in this community, and this community has helped shape them. So, when they get the recognition from the people here in Glendale Heights and in this community, I think it's just really more meaningful to them, and it's just a really great day for us and for them. So, just want to thank you again, and we're definitely going to put these funds to good use again next year. So, thank you.
And our fifth and final check is presented to the Glendale Heights Foundation in the amount of $4,500. Accepting the check is Jeanette, no, I'm sorry, Colette Wokevich. No, I'm sorry. Wrong name. Jeanette Wilson.
I'm Jeanette Wilson, and I just want to tell everybody, thank you. This is so greatly appreciated. We have more and more families in Glendale Heights needing help now. We get application after application, and these funds will help them. There's a lot of these people who have extenuating circumstances, and it's heart-wrenching. But this will help. Thank you.
We are proud to continue the tradition of supporting these local charity organizations and look forward to another successful event in 2026. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So, I just want to thank Jennifer on behalf of the village, and Brian, and Steve, and your staff. You guys put on a tremendous program for the Charity Classic. You work your butts off to get that golf course in shape, and I play the golf course a lot, and I played a lot of golf courses this year, and outings, and other things. And Brian, you're doing a fantastic job. You and your crew are dedicated, and you're there every day, and I can't tell you how great a shape that golf course is in, and the changes that you made are impacting the positivity of it all, because we're on pace to have a really good year to continue. And I got nothing but compliments on the condition of the course, and I brag about our golf course to everybody, and I wouldn't if it wasn't a good place to play. And I brag about our place all day, every day to everybody. So, congrats to you and your staff. The pro shop staff is great. People wouldn't be coming to the pro shop and buying stuff if the staff wasn't friendly and entertaining, and they are entertaining. So, I encourage everybody to go talk to them. But I just want to say thank you. You did a great job. Yep. And Brian, your crew, great work. Continue to do good work, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Next, public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item You have the consent agenda before you at this time?
Mayor? I'm sorry, excuse me. I would like to remove Resolution Number 8 and put it on new business, would be new business number 7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Yeah.
Any discussion, Board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Beacan?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
To new business number 7.
Thank you. Okay. You have the consent agenda before you at this time. I would like to remove Consent Item Number 7, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for laser printer maintenance and supply agreement for the Village of Glendale Heights fleet of laser printers, and authorizing the execution of the maintenance agreement. And Consent Item Number 14, approval of pay request number 1 to Builders Paving LLC for the 2025 MFT Road Program in the total amount not to exceed $856,370.88 from the agenda. Both of these items will go on the next Village Board meeting for approval.
And just for the record, Item Number 7, we're having some last-minute contract language issues between attorneys for the village and the vendor, just happened today. And then they'll work that out for next board meeting. And then 14 should have been put on next meeting, was put on this meeting earlier.
Is there a motion to remove Consent Items 7 and 14 from the agenda? Thank you, Trustee Light?
Show them.
Second. Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacan?
Yes.
The motion to remove Consent Items 7 and 14 is approved. And I didn't mention that earlier, that motion to remove Item 8 was approved.
Correct.
Moved to the new business 7. Okay. Would Village Administrator Doug Flint please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of September 4, 2025. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes is September 4, 2025. Three, approval of September 12, 2025, payroll and accounts payable listing of September 18, 2025, total amount $2,268,116.8. Four, ordinance to amend Chapter 10, titled "Bicycles" of Title 7, entitled "Motor Vehicles and Traffic" of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, low-speed electric bicycles and low-speed gas bicycles. Five, ordinance to amend Section 7-6-4, entitled "Toy Vehicles," and Section 7-6-5, entitled "Riding Outside of Clean" to Vehicles of Chapter 6, entitled "Driving Rules" of Title 7, entitled "Motor Vehicles and Traffic" of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, personal mobility devices and low-speed electric scooters. Six, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award of authorizing the execution of a contract with H2I Group Incorporated for the purchase installation of fieldhouse bleachers at the Village of Sports Hub facility. Seven has been removed. Eight has been moved to new business. Nine, a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number 7 for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project in the Village of Glendale Heights. Ten, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the Camera Park Basketball Court Improvement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights. Eleven, approval of pay request number 10 to Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the client fleet restoration project, total amount not to exceed $2,229.77. Twelve, approval of pay request number 18, final, to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades, total amount not to exceed Thirteen, approval of pay request number 3, final, to TDJK Ventures Incorporated, DBA, Sur Pro Painters of Elmer's, in total amount not to exceed $26,981.42. Fourteen's been removed. Fifteen, approval of pay request- Fifteen, approval of pay request number three to CZabo Contracting for the CDVG Cambridge Lane and Westchester Drive Water Main Replacement Project, total amount not to exceed $550,843.62. Sixteen, approval of consent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Meritato. Call a roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four? Thank you, Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four is approved. Item Two, an ordinance to amend Section 1-6-7, entitled Committees of the Board of Chapter Six, entitled Village President and Board of Trustees, of Title One, entitled Administration of the Municipal Code of the Ordinances of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2025-44. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-44? Thank you, Trustee Biacon.
Still moved.
Second. Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-44 is approved. Item Three, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2025-45. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-45?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Biacon. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2025-45 is approved. Item Four, an ordinance to waive bid, authorize the issuance of a notice of award, and authorize the execution of agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., for the acquisition of body cameras, fleet vehicle cameras, TASER equipment, and software, with five-year warranties for the village's police department. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2025-46. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-46? Thank you, Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-46 is approved. Item Number Five, a resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number One to the Software as a Service Agreement between Tyler Technologies, Inc., and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution 2025-R-110. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-110? Trustee Biacon?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you, Trustee Meritato. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-110 is approved. Item Six, a resolution adopting job descriptions for the village administrator and the assistant village administrator for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution 2025-R-111. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-111? Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-111 is approved. Moving on to our item that was moved to new business, item number seven.
Eight.
Well, it's seven under new business.
Under new business, yeah.
Right?
You're right.
Okay. Thank you, trustee. A resolution to approve and authorize a financial commitment in the Safe Routes to School Program, this is Resolution 2025-R-107. Is there a motion? Do we go to, let me do the discussion, right? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-107? So moved. Thank you, Trustee Matrasco.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Biacon. And discussion, Board?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
Can I, it looks like a really great idea. I'd just like a little more background behind it, is it a little more detail?
Sure. So, my apologies, our engineers got ahead of us. President Street is scheduled for calendar year '27 to be reconstructed, from Mill Pond to Fullerton. 2022, the village entered into an agreement with CMAP for a bicycle pedestrian path study.
I remember.
2024, that was submitted to us, and as part of that study, a regional bike and pedestrian map and plan was put in place by CMAP. Part of that plan includes a bike and pedestrian path that connects the central location of Glendale Heights, right? That it goes throughout the community, but generally connects the central location of Glendale Heights. Camera Park, Americana School, the library, golf course, and a pedestrian bike path would be built from Mill Pond to Fullerton, eight-foot wide, we have a lot of parkway there, I don't want to get ahead of everything, but that path would be built along President Street, and then connecting to Mill Pond, and Mill Pond is scheduled for reconstruction in '26, and part of that will be a path, not part of this grant, but part of the overall project, will be a path down Mill Pond that would connect to Schmal Road, and then Schmal Road up to Lys, and then connects to the Carroll Stream Path that literally goes out to the West Branch Forest Reserve, right? Other parts of that, of this plant, of the overall plan, connect the middle of the community to Polo Club, to, across Bloomingdale Road, to connect to Mill Pond, right? So, the engineers got a little ahead of us. The Safe Route to Schools grant doesn't come up a lot, and the grant takes a very long time to put together, and takes a very long time for review. This project, for us, is scheduled in calendar year '27. It might take that long to know if we even get the grant. So, the approval for tonight is that if we do get a grant awarded to us, that we have the financial commitment to work on these pedestrian paths. I understand that we're way ahead of the game in this application for the grant, but the grant process takes that long, that we need to either move forward with the grant process to possibly collect the $250,000, or not, right? I mean, I appreciate, I understand the question, and our engineers got a little ahead of us, but that's how long the grant process takes?
Yeah, it's an exciting process, I gotta say.
But the bigger projection, right, is, as we get into the '27 budget cycle, is then discussing the roadway and path and all of that, but we're obviously not there yet.
No, I think it's a great idea, and I just wanted, you know, at least get it out there a little bit, if anyone had questions.
So, what's the amount of the grant we will be getting?
Well, we're applying for the grant, the most you can get is $250,000.
Okay.
Right? We're applying for $250,000, right? The, that's, that covers 25% of the project.
Oh, okay. So it's like 975 or 980?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Meritato?
Is there, if we get the grant, is there a time limit to use it?
Well, we'll have everything in place, right? If we get the grant, if the board approves the overall plan with the roadway improvements and the pedestrian path improvements, we'll be ready to go.
Sounds good.
Any other questions, discussion items, Board, related to this? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-107 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item No, 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 no. Executive session, there is none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui.
Second.
Thank you, trustees. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Matrasco, you have the committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, September 18th, 2025, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
So noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions?
Of construction.
Okay.
Golf course.
You said golf course?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Golf course.
Golf course.
Sorry. Trustee Light?
Yes, doing good for others.
Do, okay.
Doing good for others.
Okay.
Committees.
Committees. Committee reports. Glen Lakes Golf Club Committee.
Uh, no report.
Okay. Historical Committee?
Real quick, just don't forget, September 27th, the PD will be out there, and they have a wonderful display of vintage police department stuff, not the officers, but the stuff, okay? Of course, we might have one or two old officers out there, so that's it for me.
Ordinance Committee?
No report.
Okay. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Oh, it's me.
Yeah, that's you.
We did have a meeting Tuesday, Tuesday night, and what we're doing is, we're kicking around, seeing if we could do an ice rink, an outdoor ice rink, not a portable one that you take down. This is going to be a permanent one, which in the summertime, we can use it for, I don't know, roller skating or other activities. So I, half the board members don't know this, but, but the ones that were there know about it, so I'd like to see if I can get the whole board approval to really start working on that and try to get a grant, see how much money we can get, but I think it'd really be, really be a plus for us at Cameron Park in the wintertime. And my second one is that one of the trustees wants to get the Vietnam War back in town, so we're going to start working on that. That probably takes, probably a couple of years to do, to get. We have to probably work with the Vietnam War, but that's the other, that's the other thing that we're working on. So if we can get these two done, it'll be great, it'll be great assets to the village. Thank you.
Mayor, or Trustee Matrasco, if I could, back to the ordinance committee. Trustee Light, Siddiqui, and Schmidt are on the ordinance committee, and what we voted on tonight, just so the public knows, was making the ordinance committee a committee of the board, and that will be a monthly, regular monthly meeting, the last Thursday of every month, there will be a scheduled ordinance committee meeting. It might not meet every month, but it'll be the last Thursday of the month will be a committee of the board.
Am I in the ordinance committee?
Uh-huh.
Am I?
Surprise.
Yeah.
Surprise. No, I think it's Johnny, right?
It's me. No, I was.
Oh, is it? Okay, Trustee Biacon, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry. So, Trustee Biacon.
That's kind of unusual.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's right, he took over for trustee Schroeder. Okay. So, that committee will meet, the first meeting is going to be scheduled for the last Thursday of October. We're putting, we'll have an agenda, but we have things to go last Thursday of October.
What time do they meet, though?
Uh, seven o'clock-ish, I haven't said a time yet, but.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
I, I do have a question. Could I poll the board and see if that's a good idea for the ice skating rink?
Well, I love your.
Because it's going to take time to get a grant, and there's a lot of work involved in getting this done.
I, I agree with it. I mean, it's been discussed before, and we had that temporary one that was up there, and it was utilized quite a bit.
Yeah, but the temporary ones, in the wintertime, it gets up to 40 degrees, it melts.
It melts.
I mean, this is going to be a refrigerated one, I mean, it's going to be up-to-date skating rink.
And I think in the summertime, it's got a surface on it that they can roller blade on as well.
Yes. They can do roller hockey as well, yes.
So if I can get consensus, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, Keith.
We'll start working on it.
Start working on it. All right, thank you, Board.
Okay, is that all for Parks and Recs?
Done.
Okay. All right. Anything else in ordinance, are we good?
We're good.
Okay. Property Enhancement Committee?
No report.
Okay. Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
It's, it's bill now.
No. Okay, no report.
There's no, there's no report, so.
Okay. All right. All right, public comment, committee recommendations and discussions regarding only. Anybody? No?
This is regarding to Pat's request for the ice skating rink. You don't need water. Pat, they had an ice skating rink at Stratford Square, right on the second floor, and you can remove the plates and put wood if you want for the roller skating in the wintertime, but it's all plastic, and they were busy, busy, busy.
Yeah, I think that's what this is, Keith, this is.
No, no, no.
No, this one is, this one would be water, because the requirements for the plastic one, it's a different kind of skate, and I apologize, I'm not super into the information.
It's synthetic. It's the synthetic ice, yeah.
But they use ice skates. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You don't need no electric, no refrigeration or nothing to freeze the ice, the water.
The grant that we're looking at is for a refrigerated ice rink. That's the, there's a grant out there that's, sorry, $25,000 that would help offset the funding of it.
Okay, I just thought about this other product.
We'll look.
Thank you, Chester.
Thank you, Chester.
Yeah. Nothing else? Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the board? Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the board?
That one gentleman who wanted to talk, is it regarding one of those items? I'm not sure he understands.
No.
It's not?
No, I think it's coming later. Okay.
Well, this is the opportunity to talk about committee recommendations.
Correct.
So we are in committee recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, it's about talking about committee recommendations.
Do I need to do, I need to read this first before public comment, right? Okay. All right. Planning and zoning commission recommendation.
Public comment, committee recommendations, discussion.
Isn't that what we just did? Public comment?
Yeah.
Right? That's what we just did. Now we should be on committee.
No, we were on public comment, correct. It was just making sure that gentleman understood if he wanted to talk about committee recommendations or discussion regarding items, this is the time to talk now.
Come on up, could he?
I see what you're saying, though.
So we can, the public can see item number one. We can scroll down?
So, so just real quick, he wants to discuss item one, do I?
Yeah, if he wants to discuss item number one, he can, but we're not at item number one yet.
No, do you want me to do item one so then he can do the discussion?
No, his discussion would be now.
Okay.
Or it could be afterwards where there's another discussion.
That's why I was asking.
He could do either one.
Okay. It's your decision if you wanna do it before, after. It, it really doesn't matter. So you get a chance.
Okay, so it's about item number one, which is the recommendation to have an indoor shooting range. And, uh, the residents opposed that and here are a few of the reasons why. One of them is the public safety concerns about the residential neighborhood. Where that land is, it's right behind the house, so I think.
It's right, okay, I'm sorry.
Actually, can you give your name and your address as well? I, I assume you know, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, last name is Sharma, S H A R M A, address 1025 Victoria Lane, Glendale Heights. Yeah, I live in the same neighborhood as, uh, Seaman Ken. So, uh, the, the reason I came, because the residents, we didn't want like hundreds of people coming in. And the reason I came was that they said, well, you know, why do we oppose it in the neighborhood? One is the public safety, right behind is all residential.
Sir, I don't mean, I don't mean to stop you right now, but just so you understand that what's up for a committee re, uh, recommendation is not to approve a gun range. It's to allow it in a certain zoning district. So there's no petition or application to have a gun range. It's changing the code to allow it in a zoning district.
Yeah, we, we don't want that. We don't want that.
Just so you understand, we're not talking about anything particular.
Okay, fine, yeah. Yeah. So we don't want that code. We don't want a gun in that area. All right. And, and the reasons for that is, you know, really basically, public safety. Right behind is a single-family home with kids. And I don't think so they want noise pollution or get shot by a, you know, a gun, so that's really scary. The other thing is, it's really close to a cannabis dispensary down the street is Vissalina, which is a cannabis dispensary. And you have undesirable elements, then right next to it, you're gonna see you're gonna have a ability to have a gun. Uh, I, I think that's pretty scary. The other thing, it's, it's not the highest and best use of commercial land. We could probably have a EV charging station or something else, or something better than a violence in the neighborhood. All right, so the other thing is really a potential to decrease the neighborhood property values. I think people will get scared if they see, you know, guns, cannabis dispensaries in their neighborhood. The other biggest thing, I mentioned it to the mayor, is that dangerous intersection, which has a lot of traffic and accident, which is North Avenue and Western. It's right on the corner. I've seen five cars get messed up really bad there. Has there been a traffic study? For this property?
Are you asking for a traffic study?
No, has there been one?
There was a traffic study. From, from what I'm told, I, I think that was a couple of years ago, Doug, two, three years ago, traffic study at Western and South Avenue.
Uh, I don't know that we've done a, if there's ever been a traffic study done there for, for what purpose. There's not a, there's.
Yeah, the county did.
There's no traffic study done because there's no business there. The Dodge dealerships and the, and Sunrise Chevy, um, there isn't a need for a traffic study for that. The traffic study that has been done just essentially says you have 55,000 vehicles going through there every day and there's really not a need for a traffic light at, um, Western and North or Pearl and North because you have the light at Bloomington Road and Menards.
Yeah, but that was two years ago. I mean, the things have changed. I mean, we have more warehouses now. You have seen the traffic has increased.
Truck traffic's increased.
Yeah, traffic has increased a lot. There's been a lot of more, you know, on the corner, there has been a, what's that, a good, uh, burden issue.
The village is working on correcting that.
Right, right.
Not, not without a light, there won't be a light, but we're working on some traffic changes for that intersection.
Yeah, I think before we decide on like a gun, I think we have to do a lot of the basic research about traffic studies, uh, neighborhood crime, and also safety of the police. I mean, this is gonna be a public burden and arrest and a huge tax impact for the increased police that needs to be there. So I think I'm really concerned about the police, uh, being in the line of violence. All right, so those are the main things I want to discuss, but there's other things I want to discuss also. Which is really the regulation. I mean, if we think about it, it, it doesn't even really comply in the sense that you need to have 1,500 foot from residential buildings. Uh, that, that place is just too close to a lot of single families and children who live in the neighborhood. The other is the noise pollution. You know, we gotta think about safety, uh, fencing, and also the distance. I think based on the current zoning, both of DuPage County and Glendale Heights, it, it doesn't conform. Have, have you done a study on that to see how far it should be from a residential or from, uh, from, uh, schoolchildren?
Statute's generally 500 feet.
Uh, I researched, this is 1,500.
If I could just refocus, that's not even an issue because it's for a text amendment. Regulations regarding anything doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with what we're approving tonight for recommendation.
All right, what about decreases in, uh, property values? We gotta look at the totality of the whole thing versus, you know, uh, just kinda coming up with something. I think there has to be a lot of studies. What's the impact to the safety of children? What's the impact to residential values? Does it conform? I mean, there's a lot of things we have to do before we can just kinda zone it, uh, a certain way and allow that. I mean, they could allow other things. Have you thought about other things besides, uh, a gun range, which is more, uh, I think kind of violent to the neighborhood?
Again, sir, you're directing your comments towards a particular project at a particular location.
No, but you're, you're saying you're gonna rezone it and have the ability to have.
Nothing is being rezoned. The recommendation is to allow cer, certain conditional uses in the C3 district.
Right, so we're opposing that. I, I don't think so that's a proper use to rezone it or have conditional use for it.
It's not being rezoned, it's already zoned.
It's already rezoned.
Okay, but I'm not, I'm saying I'm against the conditional use of it.
Okay, okay. By all means, thank you.
Uh, a few more things before I end.
Actually, the three minutes are, uh, just to be respectful if there's anybody else as well.
So give me, uh, five seconds. I think we gotta look at the case law. So case law, District of Columbia versus Heller, New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruzen. There's no constitutional right to guarantee location privileges. That overrides public safety and land use rules. So I think the biggest thing is, what's the highest and best use of this land? I, I think a gun is out of the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? And just a reminder, we do have the three minutes, just to be respectful.
Sure. My name is Geser Chishdi. I am a resident of 1064 Greenbrier Drive. We're, uh, same as the other person. So, uh, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, uh, like just to explain, I'm not against guns or like, I'm not going to that discussion. Should we have guns? Should we have gun range? Not about that. The only concern is about the location. Because in that location, uh, last year, uh, many, uh, many, many years ago, um, like you can get confirmation from the staff. When the dealership was not there, the road was straight and it was made a turn or it was changed bit to accommodate the dealership. And because of that, now there is a dead end, like there is a dead curve. When people are coming into the neighborhood, coming out, when there are car parked on the street, then there are many times people have avoided an accident. And because of that, may they have requested people are driving fast, there should be a study done. All those kind of things are discussed in the past. There were, there was also a discussion in the past, should that street be banned for traffic? So that, the, the members, the residents came and the other community member had a conversation. They said, okay, they will try not to put too many cars and stuff like that. So being, uh, putting a commercial place there, which if you look at other gun places, they are one in Lombard, which is two and a half mile away, one is, one in Villa Park, you can look at those. Those places are like industrial kind of areas where there are similar industrial buildings and then there are a lot of parking. And there's one Villa Park on the North Avenue, tons of parking around. So let's say if you were making this next to Tony's, there was one spot empty now, there, there was a equipment store and they have gone. If you're making in that, that would have been fine, for example, because there's tons of parking, there are bigger available space. In this one, it's very small, weird. And then a lot of traffic issues, which there are, other people have explained in the morning, there's a lot of traffic, people coming in, in and out. Uh, people have, like, if there are more parking needed in this place, it's very small. If you can go and see and have a, uh, study about how many parking spots you can put. And what about the timing, the other stores, other ranges, they are open from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Lot of people coming in about 12 and noon, even in the daytime they're coming. You can look at the Google map, the Google, it shows you the traffic, how many people are coming. So if you look into that during the whole day and whole weekend, more traffic will come in our area and they will use this road, which our whole community uses to exit and enter from. And even the dealership, when they, um, at the night, they put a park, a car there to make sure people are not using that way to go through. So I think when the dealership was made, they were told, make sure that they close that parking at night, at 9 o'clock or something, they blocked that. So my also view is that, uh, a parking study should be done. Please make sure the more traffic will be coming in. Um, and already that road is experiencing a lot of, uh, traffic. There are kids in the morning standing on the roads because of those technical reasons. I think more, uh, detailed studies need to be done and location need to be evaluated from everything. That's my only concern.
Keith, is that something that we can put in? Is it something we can look in just for the safety, especially with the children that he's referring to?
So you, you're talking about doing a traffic study?
Well, we don't, well, we don't have a business.
No, 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 he was talking about just before even that, he mentioned that there's safety for the kids there.
There's a bus stop.
I mean, the bus stop is there in the corner of that street and more people coming in. Already there are issues there.
Well, it's the only way in and out of your subdivision.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's the only way in and out of subdivision. I mean, it's where every car has to go.
So what I'm saying, if the business has enough parking on their spot, uh, to accommodate the business need, that's fine. Otherwise, people will be, more people will be parking on the roads and there'll be more issues in that part of the road. That's my concern.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keith, do you mind if I just jump in with like a quick plan commission report, just to clarify what we're doing today? Just, and I can answer some of these questions as well, um, 'cause I know we're getting a little site-specific, 'cause I think we know kind of where the thought process is going. But let me just tell you from a plan commission standard, what was recommended. Uh, this is just to approve a land use as conditional, a conditional use. Uh, also, the EV charging station, uh, was also, uh, recommended for approval for a conditional use. Uh, what this means is, um, there's three ways, like when you come in and you wanna start a business or build a house or do something. We have zoning and you're either permitted, you're prohibited, or it's called a conditional use. When a conditional use is, it means it's a one-on-one case basis. You come to plan commission, there's a public hearing, neighbors get notified if a business is deemed a conditional, like a gas station, massage parlor, or, you know, uh, gun range gun sales. Uh, they have a public hearing, you come and speak your mind, just like you're doing today. Um, and it's when we actually have somebody that's going in a specific spot and they're gonna have to meet certain, one, standards for all conditional uses, such as they have to be harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood, they cannot be a nuisance, things like that. The things you're explaining, that's what a conditional use is for. And that's why we, um, the recommendation was conditional, not outright permitted. 'Cause outright permitted, as long as they meet code, they could put it up and move on. So the conditional use is a mechanism for us to get a quality product that is not gonna be injurious to the neighbors. And number two, um, we also added with the report additional criteria. That, uh, when a conditional use, if this type of use came in, in the C3 district, not just one specific site, but anywhere in the C3, they would have to also prove they're gonna meet these standards. A lot of them are, um, duplicative of federal and state standards. There's, any gun range is gonna have certain federal standards as well to, uh, to make sure it, it doesn't cause a problem. So in general, I know we're talking about a specific site and any conditional use as well. If, even it was a large truck depot going next to your house, if the plan commission felt it was necessary, they could require a traffic study. They could require certain things that typically for outright permitted uses, you wouldn't have to do. Um, so actually, that's why it's our strong recommendation to make this a conditional use in the C3. Also, 'cause it comes with a retail component. We felt the, the most, um, dense and, or the most, um, general business district only was preferable.
So if I understand you correct, you are saying that it could be, uh, EV charging, it could be a retail, it could be, right now, we are only changing the, the zone, zoning, that's it, correct? So it's not necessarily means there's gonna be a, uh, gun shop there or there's gonna be a EV charging station or there's gonna be a retail, correct?
Anything that's permitted or conditional use in the C3.
Yeah.
We're just adding these two items into that, like bucket of permit, conditional uses in the C3. So if there's a C3 property and you wanna open an EV charging station with a Dunkin' Donuts in it, it's gonna be a conditional use, which means you're gonna have to come to plan.
Yeah, it could be any business, yeah.
Or it could be a gas station or any, or if it's an outright permitted use, a strip center, right, in any C3.
Yeah, because thank you for explaining that because there is some misconception or misunderstanding that we are passing some gun sale shop right now, which we are not. Thank you.
How many C3s do we have in our town?
Uh, number of parcels that are C3? I, um, I don't know. I just know that most of North Avenue. So I mean, Commercial Quarter doors, North Avenue and Army Trail Road have a variety of the business districts. I wouldn't have that on my head. I could get that information for you.
But I'm saying anything on Army Trail or anything on North Avenue are C3s, minority?
No, 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 no.
No, not even?
C3 is a minority. C2 is a majority.
Correct.
Okay.
Your, your Concorde Greens, your Plaza West Lakes, your Bloomingdale Plazas are C2s.
Okay.
The only C3 on Army Trail Road is the Shell gas station for some reason. There are pockets of C3, uh, well, most of the south side of North Avenue is C3.
South side of North Avenue, okay.
Correct.
Okay, anyone else? Please state your name and your address.
Masarikwal, 1069 Victoria Lane, Glendale Heights, same subdivision. I would not take much time. Uh, I will endorse, uh, everything what my predecessors have said, the other two gentlemen, because I belong to same, uh, neighborhood. Um, although, uh, gentleman was saying that it is not, uh, for gun range, it's, it's maybe, uh, only for C3 and it can be used for, uh, different purpose. And I understand one of that purpose is, uh, it can be used for gun range as well. So I find it useful to let our representative know about sensitivity of the residents. It is, it's really useful. Even today, if, uh, it's not on the table, uh, particularly, uh, shooting range. But if shooting range is a one potential use and it is somewhere somebody's mind, it is, uh, very important that all our trustees and our, uh, village management, they know how we, the resident thinks. I personally and, uh, many of my, um, fellow residents, we experience every day that pain that the last time village has took a wrong turn and made the decision for that dealership. And the street curb, it, it's really dangerous. I experience every day. In the morning when the kids are going to school, mothers are taking kids to, to school and the, the traffic are coming from other side, it's a dead end. And if anybody would be careless for a second, there's a chance of, uh, a fatal collision. And, uh, that street has a street parking as well. So, uh, with that, a bitter experience, it is, uh, very concerning for us. If there's any possibility, considering that property for, uh, such usage, which we are saying shooting range. Uh, the prob, the land is so close to townhomes and the single family, it's a smart strip. And it can be a security issue, it could be, uh, a psychological uncomfort, uh, for the entire subdivision. And this is a subdivision which, uh, I believe pay the highest tax and revenue to the village. So, uh, I think our sentiments should be considered. And if there's any such proposal, uh, that should be reconsidered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Christopher Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. As far as this being changed with a C3, um, as far as gun sales go in that type of, um, general, that's not, that's not an issue so much with gun sales. It's the range issue and the safety issue behind it. I don't see a problem with it being in a light industrial area for a gun range. But to have it in a commercial area where we're. But to have it in a commercial area where we're talking about residential, um, kids going, buses and things like that, we have plenty of industrial area and there's probably plenty of industrial area in this town that is not being utilized. So I don't see a problem with a gun range being in an industrial area. And if they wanna attach a sales within that particular, but to have a gun range along with the sales along a, uh, a strip in a commercial area, I think it's totally, um, not in the best conducive, uh, for our area, especially along North Avenue. That's not a revenue generating area. And as, um, I used to do appraisal, it's not the best use for that type of property. You want a revenue generating and gun ranges do not generate sales tax. It's the sales end of the ammunition and the guns that will generate that. I don't oppose gun sales personally for that particular type of, uh, business. But when you get into the gun range, you're looking at the safety and you're looking at the business as a whole. EVs I find that, but somebody putting that gun range into this, uh, ordinance or amendment or something like that seems to be a little bit stretching, a little bit far. And especially going into that neighborhood and things like that. And you have kids and you have buses, you have a lot of foot traffic and things like that. It's not the proper area for that particular commer- commercial piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, now I'll read the committee recommendation. All right, Planning and zoning commission recommendation. A recommendation to approve tack, text amendments to allow firearm sales with indoor shooting range and training and EV charging stations with accessories uses as a conditional use in the C three general commercial district. Is there a motion to move this to the board with recommendation to concur? Trustee Lake?
I move, make a motion to move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Beakan?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, G M L.
Oh, I get to vote?
Yes.
It's the committee.
It's the committee of the whole.
That's fine, yes, yes. All right, the motion to move this recommendation to the board is approved. All right, there, no additional discussion, correct? All right, on to other. Pat, you had one, I have you guys down the line, so Pat, you had up.
Golf course or construction?
No, he had construction.
Oh, construction.
Okay, golf course.
This is what I say, Jeff, they contractors did a great job in my area. They were just about all done now, they just started golden this morning whipping up the sidewalk.
Yeah, they should, uh, we actually, um, they asked for a little, uh, extension, which we don't have an issue with. Um, they don't think they'll need it, but in our construction meeting today, they are on schedule, but just weather and things like that, cause of the time of year, so. Um, should be done with the concrete phase two pretty soon here.
Yeah, good, good, thank you, yeah, that's the last street, so, and we'll be all done.
Good.
Thank you.
Ken, you had for golf course?
I did. I'm a little curious and Doug, maybe you can help us here. We did the, um, golf charity classic and we took part of camera and we had a little chipping zone there and I'd, I'd like to know if that is something that can become permanent in our town? That little chipping zone or some sort of driving range?
You have a chipping zone or?
I don't know. That was, that was a fun day.
It was really, it was, it was really cool.
I'm wondering, do, can we have something like that? Do we have something like that?
Currently, no. We do not have a practice, well, there's a chipping green and putting green at the golf course that people can chip and putt at. There is not a practice facility at the golf course where people could come and practice and hit drivers or hit irons or hit twenty yard wedges or any of that, right? We do not have that, um.
Could we?
Availability. I have a plan for that, yes, we could. There's areas at Camera Park that could, uh, be utilized for a, um, smaller-ish, uh, practice range, uh, certainly not like a.
I'm not talking top golf.
Yeah.
I'm talking something for families is, is what I'm talking.
Well, what we really need is a practice facility for junior golf.
Yes.
And, uh, for players that come there, that wanna warm up before they play, right? We need a facility for them as well.
Okay.
But we really miss out on the junior golf, cause we don't have the practice facilities to accommodate a junior golf program. And, you know, Jennifer, I don't know if she's still here or not, but Jennifer's actually or the coach at Glendale East for the golf teams. And we have five Keith.
Correct.
Schools that play golf at Glendale Lakes, that, that Glendale Lakes is their home course. Um, there's not a place for them when they come to Glendale Lakes to warm up and practice, right? So, uh, it's something that's on our long range plan of, uh, you know, using the open space that we have to, uh, find, uh, find an area for a, uh, practice facility for families to go and, and chip and putt, for people to go warm up before they play and for us to really instill a, uh, important for me, a junior golf program.
The kids, the kids were playing today, the high school kids.
Yeah.
They must have, they have tournaments today, yeah, they're playing today.
There were at least two teams there tonight.
Yeah.
Can you administer golf to that? For us that do not golf. I would.
But it is on our, it is on our, our master list of development.
That's good to know.
I fully support this, I would.
This is great.
Chip, I would be at that chip range thing every day. I caught the ball at the church golf classic at that clinic.
You can go to the golf course and bring a chip and a putter.
Yeah, I, I shipped a ball into a basket, it took me twenty seven tries.
Great, I mean, if you wanted, if you wanted to do that.
Twenty seven tries later, I got the ball in the basket, so I'm in.
I would say forty-five and I never even got in the basket, so. Okay, anything else on the golf course?
I just wanted to know if, if that's something we could do, Doug?
It is, and, you know, it is, um, it just, like everything else.
It sounds like it would go with our golf course. I mean, it sounds like it would just be, could be an addition to that and help our families.
Yeah.
Uh, like everything else though, it's just a, uh, it's a space and money issue.
Yeah. We got Camera Park there.
Still a space and money issue.
All right, anything else if not, all right. Trustee Light, you had.
Oh, okay, this is not as important as golf, but it was something that brought to my attention that, that I was kind of amazed at. Um, have you ever seen or looked at a plastic shopping bag and thought, could this change someone's life? Most of us seek trash. Mary Lou Phillips sees an opportunity, comfort and hope and a vision for change in the community one stitch at a time. Um, Mary Lou is part of our senior center. Uh, for those who haven't had the pleasure of meeting Mary, Mary Lou is one of our treasured seniors at the community center, or senior se- senior centers we'll call it. Um, but she's not just any senior, she is what I would call a plastic bag, um, guru. While most of us try to remember our reusable bags when we go to the grocery store, Mary Lou is actually hoping for non-recyclable plastic bags because she found an extraordinary purpose for them. Um, Mary Lou is creating a, a mat that will help, um, will help the homeless. And it's, it's incredible thing. Mary Lou is, um, desperately simple, profound impact, profoundly impactful, sorry. She collects those, uh, pesky plastic bags that would otherwise would end up in landfills for centuries. With, uh, patient hands and a generous heart, she transformed them, cuts them, looping them and crocheting them into durable waterproof sleeping mats for, for people experiencing homelessness. Each mat provides insulation from the cold ground and a small measure of dignity to someone who may have very little. Um, she was nice enough to give me a, uh, a mat.
Oh, wow, that's plastic bags?
Oh, my God.
And these are all plastic bags.
Wow.
They unroll, it's extremely soft, I'll leave it up here for someone to take a look at. I thought Mary Lou wanted to be here tonight, but she had other obligations. But I, I just had to say what an incredible person this person was. And when I heard the story and what she had done, you know, I instantly went to my bag of bag of bags and, and gave her as much as I could. She liked different colors because she could do the edging differently and she can actually create something that's really pretty neat. But I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to her for making someone else's life really, really wonderful.
So is she, uh, thank you, Trustee Light, this is incredible. Is she collecting these from the senior center? Like, can we all bring our bags to senior center? Is that what they ask this?
I, I, I think she is collecting them, I know we will donate them, I know she'll use them. She likes the different colors, the grays, the whites and everything else like that. Um, she will collect them, I don't know how much we can overload her, but.
Could we?
So, yeah, I think that if that's something that the board desires, we can certainly collect those and get those to her, that's not a problem.
I mean, if she, I'd love to say, you know, it'd be fun to learn how to do this because I time and not carry luggage with them is all I do.
I would take that class, yes. So do we not have like, you know how when you go into the sports hub, it has the recycle bin, those, it, it's not necessarily, it, it's plastic, I guess. Do we have something like that where we can maybe say, donate your plastic bags?
Uh, I'm sure we can find some and put some together.
Find out, Chief, find out, have Jennifer find out if she actually wants that many?
Yeah.
Well.
You know what, even if she, even if she does, okay, even if she doesn't, we can always, there's other places that you can donate them if she doesn't want them all. But that looks like that's quite a bit. That's really cool.
It's soft, I'm gonna nap on it later.
Yeah, but that looks like it's probably a couple hundred to make that happen, that's a lot.
But I just wanted, that was, that was all I wanted to bring up, because it's incredible.
Thank you.
Really cool.
It's always good to hear good things. Good. And Trustee Siddiqui, you have committees?
Sure, so on August sixteenth, um, I suggested about the three committees which the board approves. So I just wanna know, where are we with those committees? It's for financial oversight, which we are now gonna say budget oversight.
I, I talked to the mayor this week on the capital improvement and cap, capital infrastructure and, and budget oversight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, trying to figure out how to make that up exactly.
Okay.
Um, there's a bunch of different models out there of, from different communities on how that's made up. So something we need to discuss, I think it's gonna be on a upcoming agenda.
It is.
Okay.
And that's something that, uh, board is, um, I connected with, I, I think many of you, I'm gonna be sending you an invitation today, or today, tonight when I get home for our next workshop to ask you to take a look at a couple of different dates coming up in October. It's gonna be, um, either, I want, off the top of my head, I wanna say it was eleventh or eighteenth, were the two choices. Um, but something that we wanna be able to, at the first meeting in October, um, if we can get to it. If not, we're gonna be, make sure that we utilize the workshop to, um, further define. Because what we're looking for now is, to your point, Trustee Siddiqui, what is the framework going to be?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And Doug, uh, we've tasked administration with helping us, you know, discover what is out there as options so that we can come back to the board with those recommendations and ask you to react to that. So that's the plan.
Thank you.
So we're, we're working on and just figuring out all the research of what the right way for us is.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And I understand there was a opportunity to have a, um, meeting with Trustee Siddiqui and Trustee Matrasco, um, as kind of a preliminary, uh, technology?
Uh, yes, we do.
Uh, pseudo-committee, if you will, um, meeting of the minds. I think that's a good example of how important the work of, of these tech, these committees will be because of the substance of your conversations, so, thank you, Trustee.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? State your name and your address. I really wanna say Margaret, state your name.
I'm Margaret Langgriff and I'm on President. And, um, I've been trying to follow your e-bike, e-scooter ordinance and I printed out the agenda and I printed out the details. Um, number four and five, did you vote on it today?
That was an old business, wasn't it? Yeah, it's an old business.
Okay, so.
It was on the consent. It was on the consent.
Our consent, yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to say old business, but that's.
Okay, so, so the details behind these agenda items went into, they were adopted today?
On the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Consent agenda was adopted today, tonight.
Okay, okay, so.
Not the new business.
Okay, um, as far as communicating like these new rules to the public, is, is that gonna happen soon?
Yes, so David and the chief have been asked to put together a marketing plan and distribute once, uh, this doesn't go into fact for a couple of weeks yet, but once it goes into full effect, when it's posted, uh, between now and then, they're gonna be working on a village-wide marketing plan to get the news out to everybody that generally these e-bikes and electric bikes are prohibited if you're under the age of eighteen.
Okay, cause, cause in reading this, it sounded like e-bikes, you could be sixteen, scooters, eighteen.
Yeah, the sixteen, I think is with a driver's license, if I'm not mistaken.
They're, they're both different, so one is a scooters and that is the eighteen, the electric bike is sixteen. And there's variances on all of them. And the whole idea is we'll have an educational set, uh, session where we'll take, this is probably gonna push us until spring. So the enforcement action, just because of weather, bikes and scooters probably, by the time we do the educational, it'll probably change over, so it'll be winter, so you won't see many of them out there. But our whole goal is the educational process, so we can get people ahead of the game on this, they understand what's going on. We're gonna team up with the schools too, so they can help us assist with the educational.
Right, but my concern has always been the adults, um, that are using them in lieu of a car. Um, on President, they're, they're using President as a thoroughfare because they can't drive a Shmael. Um, and I'm just wondering, um, if these vehicles can go over twenty miles an hour, are they allowed on President?
No, and that's the other parts of it. So there's other caveats for the, it's not just the age, it's the speeds that you can go on there too. And that's what the ordinance has in there. You will see more when the educational stuff comes out. We'll do it both through social media and we'll hit the boards on the corner of Fullerton, both ends of it. And then, like I said, we'll hit the schools too. So the information will be out there, we're also gonna do it at Health and Safety Fair, so we get the educational information, we're out to all of our residents.
But as far as the enforcement, that's not gonna happen for a while?
We will, we will do that. So we're gonna try to tell people, when you implement an ordinance, you usually have to wait a while before you start, um, enforcing it anyway. And we just, it, it's a perfect timing, weather.
That's why, uh, it's like, it was hard for me to figure out what it was. So how could you enforce something that the people don't know about yet?
And that's what it is, so we'll.
That's why I'm wondering when you're gonna communicate this. Uh, one thing on here that, that, maybe I'm not understanding, but it, it says as far as putting a child on a bicycle, you're allowed to if the child is secured to the person with a backpack or sling?
No, that's like an infant, so, and that's not, that, that's our regular bike ordinance. This was addition to it. So the, this electric bike ordinance was onto the bicycle ordinance and that was part of it. You will see a lot of times when the, uh, younger couples or any couple, they'll have the infant on their back and that's how they take them back and forth too. That's the whole idea behind it. That was not added on because of the electric bike or electric scooter, that was in the original ordinance.
Okay, cause I, 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 my kids are older now, but I thought you had to have a bicycle. I thought it had to be like, like a car seat, you know how we're, we're required to have a certain car seat? On a bike, you would think an infant would have to be in a car seat, not in a sling.
People do it different ways, some people have the trailer behind it. But like I said, this had nothing, that part of the ordinance had nothing to do with electric bike or electric scooter, that was all.
Right, because I do see a parent driving a kid holding on, uh, past my house regularly and I keep waiting for, yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's different, it's the actual backpack.
Okay, all right, so we'll get the information soon then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds like the Health and Safety might be the first. When you start to really get that word out.
It'll start, i- if not tomorrow, next week.
Yeah, it'll come up before, but we'll, we're really.
No, but you're, you're gonna really get in front of everybody at that point.
Cause I know Carol Stream, they posted a, a nice little summary of what the rules were.
And we have that.
On Facebook.
Uh, yes, and I'm hoping to see some Facebook.
Yes, we, we have that all set up.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Hi. Um, so I live in two two six Shore Drive, uh, Condy Medium. Um, for last four years, we having a very problem about parking, especially wheelchair parking. My younger brother is a, is on wheelchair. Uh, we asked for their association for, uh, wheelchair, wheelchair parking. They, they don't have none wheelchair parking there. So we're, we are just tell, ask the association to write letter, and we got no response about that too. So we're having a very bad issue about the wheelchair parking.
Okay. So Doug, uh, these gentlemen lives in my neighborhood in the Shorewood.
Mm-hmm.
And they have a disabled, uh, child. Uh, the husband do a job and, uh, the wife has a surgery. She cannot take that child, like, you know, with, um, without, uh, help. And they really don't have any parking over there.
There's no handicap parking.
No handicap parking. Plus, they are also looking for something so they can take that child towards their apartment. I think there is a-
We looking to build a ramp.
Something, a ramp or something. It's really making them, because, uh-
So there's, there's no ADA compliance and there's no handicap parking?
Yeah, so we need to do something because they really have no means to move that child.
So Jason, I think we'll have ComDev out there tomorrow to check on the handicap parking.
Yeah.
We'll look at the rules of what the ADA requirements are for there and see if they're in compliance or not in compliance on the ADA.
Okay.
But handicap parking, which should be easy to resolve.
Okay.
Because I'm sure there's an ordinance there that says how much handicap parking they have to have. You're at two twenty-six, you said?
Two two six, yes.
Okay. Shorewood?
Shorewood Drive, yeah.
Okay.
So you will be in touch with, um, just after the meeting?
Yeah, yeah. After the meeting, I'll come talk to you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.